Pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, grant integrity and well-being to all who are in authority in our nation and this community. Pray for our mayor, for the city council men and women, for our staff. Grant them grace and wisdom to rule according to your good pleasure, to the maintenance of justice, and to the hindrance and punishment of injustice, that we may lead quiet and peaceful lives in all godliness and honesty through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. It is 5:30, November 1st, 2021, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item on the agenda this evening is approval of the agenda, and there are no additions or corrections that I'm aware of. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Some motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Krista. On favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. A motion carries. This evening, we have three public hearings. The first public hearing is for a tax increment financing plan for the Red River Mill redevelopment project, and I will call on our community development manager, Clara Beck. Good evening, Clara.
Clara, when you start, should I call up Doug as we start? We're going to have Doug Green dial in so that we can keep streaming at the same time.
Okay.
Yeah, so the city has been working with Mr. Kevin Bartram, who is the owner of the mill district, to work on a TIF plan to help him with the redevelopment. He was recently awarded a deed redevelopment grant, so that's one piece of the puzzle with the financing, but TIF is going to be another. So we've been working with Baker Tilly as our municipal advisors to come up with an analysis for the site itself and for Mr. Bartram's request, and we have determined that it would likely be a good use of TIF financing, tax increment financing, and it would help to redevelop that site to be less of a blight in our town and help get some new businesses off the ground. So, high level, his plans for the site are to do a boutique hotel in the mill building, which would be the first phase of development. That would retain the outward appearance of the building because it is nationally registered at this point, and then further down the road in a second phase of development, there would be some apartments on the site closer to the river on that slab that's there currently. So, any questions before we dive into the financial analysis or hear from Doug at all?
I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you to yourself and to Nataya Bowman from Greater Fergus Falls and all the work. I'm just thrilled, the thought of redeveloping the mill. When we started the downtown riverfront master plan process five years ago, that was one of the critical points that we identified, and it sat blighted on the corner of our downtown for generations. So, the opportunity to redo, this is exactly what tax increment financing is designed for. The fact that we're using historic tax credits, the fact that we're using tax increment financing along with the redevelopment funds from deed, this is how we are getting things done in the community. So, thank you to staff, to Bill, Andrew, Clara, and Nataya, and your team over at Greater Fergus Falls. I just could not be more excited about this project. So, anyway, that's what I have to say.
No problem.
So Doug, are you there?
I am.
All right, so we have you on the phone, and we have your PowerPoint up on the screen. So, apology to the public a little bit here. We're going to, Doug will tell us when to flip screens. We have a little problem with a broken piece of our technology that doesn't allow us to zoom in and stream at the same time, so that's why we're doing it this way. So, your first title page of your PowerPoint is up on the screen, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Bill, and good afternoon, good evening to you all, and I concur, this is a very exciting project. So, Bill, if you could go to slide three, just jump to slide three, please.
Okay, where it starts, Red River Milling?
Correct.
Yep.
And Clara gave a good background of the project, this exciting project. So, phase one, anticipated to start, to occur, begin next year, and go through 2023. The expected development cost is a little over $5 million, and the taxable market value, or the estimated market value once fully developed for phase one for the hotel is around $3 million. And this will be a pay-as-you-go TIF note, so the developer will be incurring all the costs associated with redevelopment. But keep in mind, and we can discuss this, this TIF plan reflects development at both phases, and we do that just per convenience purposes. It gives us more flexibility down the road. So, again, it's, development cost is a little over $5 million, estimated market value, taxable market value of about $3 million. Next slide.
Okay.
You may have, you may have seen this before, but state statutes, there's about five to six different tax increment financing districts. This one is called a redevelopment district, and state statutes outline all the rules for them. For a, in order for us to create a redevelopment district, the parcel, 70% of the parcels of the district must be occupied, and there's the tabs that we go through to determine that, and 50% of the buildings have to be determined to be structurally substandard, and that is defined by if the cost of bringing the building into compliance with the current building codes exceeds 15% of the cost of constructing a new building. So, there's an explicit definition for the qualifications for this, and this project clearly qualifies, as you referenced earlier. It is the, it's a perfect example of why we do have redevelopment TIF districts. So, next slide.
Okay.
90% of the revenue must be used to reimburse the cost of what we call the correcting conditions, that's a term we use, that allow the TIF district to be qualified, and these eligible project costs or these correcting conditions are acquiring the property, demolition, clearing of land, installation of utilities, roads, putting in the roads, sidewalks, and parking facilities. And so, the costs must meet this requirement. Each district also has a duration of redevelopment. On the longer side, it has a maximum term of 26 years. That doesn't mean it has to be, remain open for 26 years, that just means that we're allowed to keep it open for that long. And the districts will be certified once the obligations are satisfied, and once obligations are satisfied, it has to be decertified at that point. The next slide. So, the estimated reimbursable TIF eligible costs, which are demolition, site improvements, remediation, utilities, is about 1.5. The interest coincidentally is about the same, 1.6%, and along with the administrative expenses, we get to a total budget of $3,459. Again, that is a, that's a specific term, we said, what is the TIF budget, and here it's 3.4, 3.5 million dollars. And that's a threshold for this specific, well, for any district. Next slide. And the estimated revenues equals that 3.4 million dollars, if it stays outstanding for the full 26 years. Next slide, financing project costs. As I mentioned, this is a pay-as-you-go TIF district, where the developer pays for the public improvements and reimburses by the tax increment. The reimbursement is limited to the amount of TIF collected, so the city will have no obligation in the event that the TIF revenue does, there is a shortfall in that. So, it greatly limits the city's exposure to have a pay-go district. The TIF plan provides, what I mentioned earlier, provides total budget authority for the district. Again, that's about 3.5 million dollars. So, the current tax increment financing request for assistance is only about $580, $579,000. The projected repayment term of $579,000 is approximately 15 years, only if phase one hotel is constructed. Only if phase one goes forward, estimated to be able to close down this district in about 15 years. Obviously, if phase two proceeds, the increment increases and we'll be able to close it down shorter, before 15 years. So, next steps is to approve the resolution creating the district. Again, this is not obligating the city to anything, this is really just administrative stuff. We won't even certify the district until a later time, it's just created. And before we do get into any, before we certify the district, we will have a development agreement that will outline the specifics of the project, and that will be brought to the city council. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yep, thanks, Doug. I've got a question. The, so the 3.5 is the maximum, 3.59, whatever that number was, million for the, for the both phase one and phase two of the entire district, correct? And that $579,000 request, that comes directly from the developer, right? So, he could request up to the, I mean, feasibly up to the 3.5 million, but he's requested the 579 is what he needs to make his project a go. Is that accurate? For phase one, right? Phase one, yeah. Phase two will come, would come back at a later time if there is phase two, so.
Sure, okay. I just want to make sure I understand that that 579 comes, that's his gap.
That's the developer, right?
Yep, those are the numbers he's identified as the numbers that would be eligible for TIF.
Other questions from the council before we open up to the public hearing? All right, with that, I will open the public hearing for the tax financing plan for the Red River Milling redevelopment project. Anyone wishing to speak to this issue, please step to the lectern and identify yourself.
Good evening, Your Honor, and members of the council. I'm Nataya Bowman with Greater Fergus Falls, 403 South Union Avenue. Mr. Bartram could not be here this evening, but he wanted to express his gratitude for the incredible collaboration to move this project forward. Without assistance like this from both the city of Fergus Falls and the state of Minnesota, this project would not be possible. He looks forward to the opportunity to bring this project back, or this property, rather, back to life. And as the economic development organization that serves Fergus Falls, Greater Fergus Falls shares in Mr. Bartram's excitement about this redevelopment and is pleased to support, or is pleased to offer support in favor of his request for tax increment financing. This TIF request would support the redevelopment of the historic flower mill into the boutique hotel. This project would be made possible with a really strong private-public partnership that we should all be very proud of. This includes private investors, state and federal historic tax credits, a Minnesota deed redevelopment grant, and, if approved this evening, TIF. Generally speaking, developments like this can occur without incentives, but utilizing this type of incentive really maximizes the quality of the development opportunities, opportunities, ooh, can't speak tonight, that we can attract. In this particular case, this redevelopment would remove blight and redevelop a high-profile site that has sat vacant for several decades. It would also really add to the momentum that we have going on with the downtown redevelopment right now and could really supplement future redevelopment of the former dairy site. It'll also create at least three new jobs and provide significant increase to the tax base. Currently, this property generates about $6,600 in annual property taxes and would increase to an estimated $95,000. It would also provide an additional amenity and attraction tool for tourism and a range of new workforce. And lastly, the project has the potential for a second phase of development that was already mentioned, that would result in additional housing over the next several years. We are grateful to Mr. Bartram for his interest and confidence in investing in Fergus Falls and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Nataya. Anyone else like to speak to this issue? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and it's back to the council. We'll be looking for a resolution approving the establishment of that TIF district, 415, within the Development District Four, and approving tax increment financing plan, therefore an authorizing interfund loan.
I will offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
Second that.
Thank you, Tom. Discussion, questions, comments? Yeah, Scott, go ahead.
I'd just like to voice my support for this project, as it's already been said. I think it'll do wonders for what's going on downtown. Generally speaking, when it comes to incentives, I really am skeptical. I think in this case, using the incentives that are available are appropriate.
Yeah, I agree, Scott, and I just wanted to also say thank you publicly to Mr. Bartram for his investment in our community, and I want to say, to the council, you know, in conversations with Mr. Bartram and Nataya and Clara, I think you guys can back this up, you know, the fact that Fergus Falls was willing to invest in itself downtown with a two-block stretch, that is what, you know, that is what motivated him to invest in our community. So, it's, and we talked about it for four years with the planning process, it's leveraging public investments to create private development, and that's what's happening, and so, and that wouldn't have happened without the council's support and vision of the downtown project, so, say thank you to the council as well.
With, if no, the comments, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Second public hearing this evening is dental specialties tax abatement request, and again, I will call on our community development manager, Clara Beck.
Thank you again, Your Honor, council members. Yes, this is another request for, this time, a tax abatement, which is a similar mechanism to TIF, but it has a slightly different look when we go through the development agreement, et cetera. So, Dental Specialists of Fergus Falls is a newly formed company that is kind of a collaborative of several different specialists in the dental and orthodontic and maxillofacial surgery fields. Currently, they are operating in town over by the ShopCo building, the, that one white building that's right by the railroad tracks. They do not have the opportunity to expand there, so they've been looking elsewhere, and they have landed on the Heedalls Building, which has been sitting vacant for several years. So, their request is to be able to update that building to use as their base of operations here in Fergus Falls. So, they're requesting tax abatement to be able to get the building up to code and usable for their, for their needs. It's a, it's an interesting request, I think, I don't know that council has seen one quite like this before, so it may necessitate a little bit of conversation about the direction that you'd like to go with this, but I think it's a good request, it's not over-incentivizing the building, and if you have any questions before we dive into the analysis that Baker Tilly has done, go ahead and ask, otherwise, we'll probably dive into discussion after we hear from Doug.
Thanks, Clara. Yeah, go ahead, Doug.
Okay, thank you again, and Bill, if you could just again go to slide three.
Okay, we are there.
Okay, and going down to the third bullet, Clara introduced it well, so the projects that we're looking to do, that the developers are looking to do here include environmental remediation, and by eliminating on-site septic and connecting to city utility services. Once it develops, the taxable market value will be approximately $1.4 million, and the owners of the building will be incurring all the costs associated with this. So, if you're not familiar, I believe you're everyone's familiar with abatement, but you can kind of think of abatement as just light, whereas all taxing jurisdictions take part in a TIF district, but with abatement, it is only, it can be just the city, it's city and county, or it's very rarely all three. But in this case, the county has agreed to participate as well. So, next slide. So, when tax abatement would use for economic development purposes, it, again, is outlined in statute and a bunch of things, like what are tax abatement eligible projects? There are projects that increase or preserve the tax base, provide employment opportunities, redevelop or renew blighted areas, and provide access to services. So, very broad, and you can imagine that's interpreted, and it is interpreted and used very broadly. The timeline for abatement is at 15 years, if all three taxing jurisdictions participate, but if one declines to participate, you're allowed to go out 20 years. Next slide. Again, just that before, developer pays for the improvement, they reimburse by the tax abatement, which in this case would be the city and county portions of the property taxes, and it is limited to the amount of taxes collected, or what in this case we call the abatement collected, and the city will have no obligation in the event, that should say abatement, revenue shortfall. The current abatement request is a little over $110,000 for nine and a half years. Oh, excuse me, the, the request is for city participation is $110,000 over three and a half years, and the county abatement is a little under $80,000 in that same time period. So, the next steps is if you choose to approve resolution creating the tax abatement, and at a later date, a proposed development agreement will be brought before the city council. And I do want to, as Clara, Bill, confirm that, that it certainly is the case with tax increment finance, but is, that can or cannot be the case here? Is it, you're understanding that a development agreement will be brought before this tax abatement goes in place, or is this the final say?
Yeah, I think we'll come back with a development agreement, correct?
Yeah.
Yep, you're right.
Yeah, it can, at a time, this can be, this can implement a tax abatement project just this step.
That's what we discussed all along.
Okay. Yep, Clara's saying that's what was discussed all along, is.
Okay.
With the county, too.
Yep. Amy's here from the county, too, so I'm looking right at her, so that's good.
Sorry, did you think I was looking at the car? No, I just, I didn't see.
All right, thank you, Doug, and any questions or comments after that presentation from the council before we open the public hearing? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing on the tax abatement request for the redevelopment of the Heedalls property by dental specialists of Fergus Falls. Anyone wishing to speak to this issue, please step to lectern. Good evening again, Nataya.
Good evening, Nataya Bowman, Greater Fergus Falls, 403 South Union Avenue. All right, to begin, I'd like to thank Otter Tail County for their expeditious process of supporting and approving this abatement request, as well as the ISD 544 Fergus Falls Public School District and the Greater Fergus Falls Board of Directors for providing a letter of support that was included in your packet. Fundamentally, these types of incentives drive development and remove financial barriers that typically prevent the private market from developing a site or choosing to locate elsewhere. It would have been quite simple for a car dealership, per se, to purchase the former Heedalls site, put on a fresh coat of paint, and add a new sign, but the property tax base would have likely remained the same. Because of the opportunity for this abatement, a medical facility with the highest class tax rate will nearly quadruple the tax base. This is a prime example of how a city can leverage these tools and resources to grow economically. This is an economic, or, sorry, as an economic development organization, again, we recognize the tremendous impact that the dental specialists of Fergus Falls will have on our local and regional economy and are proud to offer our support in favor of their tax abatement request. The nearly $2.6 million private investment to redevelop the site and subsequently expand and add critical medical and dental health services will remove blight and develop that high-profile site with really high-traffic visibility into this modernized medical and dental facility that sat vacant since, I believe, 2017. It will upgrade city utility infrastructure, and in fact, we showed this property multiple times over the last few years, and the lack of city utilities was the number-one barrier that stifled interest. Not only will this project retain at least 10 jobs, but it will create 10 to 15 higher-paying jobs with staff wage ranges between 24 and 30, or 20 and $34 per hour plus benefits. It will increase direct, indirect, and induced jobs, as well as the tax base for other businesses and services throughout the community and county as well. It will increase the property tax base onsite by approximately 347%. Currently, it produces 9,768 in taxes and would increase to 43, or just over $43,000 annually. The increased tax base will also increase the contribution to the school district from about $1,200 annually to $7,800 annually, further benefiting area families. Thank you to Dr. Swilsted and his partners for choosing to invest in Fergus Falls, to city staff for your time and resources that you've invested in this process, and to the council members for considering this request. I'll also add that Dr. Jason Swilsted is in the audience, too, if you do have any additional questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Nataya.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor, and council, and city staff. My name is Tara Kemfer, business address 810 North Baird here in Fergus Falls. I am here tonight on behalf of Greater Fergus Falls. So, as an economic development organization that serves Fergus Falls, Greater Fergus Falls and its board of directors recognize a tremendous impact that the dental specialists of Fergus Falls expansion will have on our local and regional economy. Proud to offer our support for their tax abatement request. Nearly $2.6 million in private investment has been put down to redevelop the former Heedalls site, and subsequently then expand, add critical pediatric dental services to the area. We will retain and create high-paying jobs, attract workforce, live, for those people to live and work in our community. We'll enhance our tax base and approve access to services for residents that are here. Furthermore, these specialized dental services will attract non-local patients to come to Fergus and make purchases that directly then benefit other businesses in our community. This project highlights the strength of public and private partnerships and shows the economic progress that our community can benefit from. So, thank you for Dr. Swilsted and his partners for investing in our community, city staff for their collaborative efforts, and our local elected officials for considering the substantial impact that will have on our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Tara.
Good evening, everyone, mayor and council members. It's an honor to be able to speak before you tonight. I'm wearing a few hats, although I left them in my chair back there. I serve as a member of the Otter Tail County Board of Commissioners, and I might also acknowledge that I serve also on the Greater Fergus Falls Corporation and efforts for this community, and also, in addition to my position on the Otter Tail County Board, I serve on the Board for the Community Development Agency, which also is known as CDA. And my name is Lee Rognes, and I live in, my house at 212 Anna Court. And I will undoubtedly be redundant tonight, you've already received some good information on this, I'll try to stay at a higher level and stay away from some of the numbers, but I think there's some things that we can take away from this opportunity here that are worth sharing, and I would start by indicating that the Otter Tail County Board of Commissioners had their public hearing on September 28th, at which time we authorized the tax abatement for this project. And before it came to the county board, it had been to a committee of the community And before it came to the county board, it had been to a committee of the Community Development Agency, or the CDA again, and then also to that board as well, receiving support, and then being moved forward. The project is a focus on the local and a proven professional business. I think that's an important beginning point for us. This is an existing building within our community. It has an ideal location and good visibility. It is an empty building, as we have heard, that has had numerous prospectus buyers over the time, with no sales to this date. And consequently, we have all heard that the realities of a lack of a good system for water and sewer is being some of the stopping points for this building to be reutilized in our community. The project funding will come, the project funding will come from the increased tax generated by the renovations. It should not be confused with that of being a grant. It is self-paying from the increased taxes. It does not require, it does require patience on the part of the tax entities such as Otter Tail County and the city of Fergus Falls. In this plan, the school district will benefit, provided needed revenue for the community's education. The school will continue to receive the current and the increased revenue based off from this project. So, you ask, how long will we have to wait? We heard earlier that we'll have to wait nine and a half to ten, nine to ten years, which is nine and a half. And if you consider that, that's two terms of your elected terms. So, it isn't forever. And if you think your terms go fast, well, there you are. The value of the renovation will be approximately four times the current. I think that's significant in today's dollar values. The hands' value is ongoing, and is not restricted to the project's rebate period. I would ask you to please consider this as a gift to those who will eventually sit in your chairs. As this project will begin to create revenue that will pay for the project, and then the bonus is after that nine and a half years, you will start to see those dollars become available to the city for projects that you will have coming forward, and services that you'll be asked to provide for the community. Also be reminded that under the Minnesota Property Tax Plan, when property values, and that is added, that this becomes the pool from which taxation takes place. So, the larger the inventory, the taxes are spread over a larger number of properties. Hence, lowering our taxes or stabilizing the taxes as well. So, as a community grows, the community wants to increase the inventory of property to stabilize the taxes, as well as increase jobs and opportunities within the community. Now, if we could just talk about the jobs for a minute, you've heard that there's going to be a retention of ten professional jobs, and it could easily generate as many as fifteen professional jobs as well in our community. These professional services will now be available to our community, no longer requiring members of our community to travel to distant places for these services. And better yet, our community will be a magnet to bring these service inquiries to our community. Those that need the service come to our community for them as well. The project will help build our community as a more complete and self-sufficient community. And my final note is that many times we look at these type of things and think we're losing, but I would encourage you to understand that you cannot lose something you never had. And this is an opportunity to increase that. That's my comments. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Lee. Good evening, Dr. Swolsted.
Yes, hello. Jason Swolsted, orthodontist here in Fergus Falls, I guess, address 221 East Lincoln. So, I'm not going to really focus on the number side of it. I think you people all have a really good idea, and thanks for, you know, considering this. From a patient's perspective, you know, Fergus Falls is desperately in need of the kind of care that we provide, orthodontic care, pediatric dental care, and oral surgery care. And right now, we have an orthodontist, we have a pediatric dentist, we do not have an oral surgeon. He comes out of Alexandria. So, the, in this proposal, we're going to increase the sizes and capacities of all three of these offices. We'll have a permanent presence from an oral surgeon. And each of our practices is kind of unique in the world of dentistry, because we don't compete with the other people in town. We are there to support them, and we help them out. So, this is not something where you're giving us an advantage in any way whatsoever. We're already there, helping the other offices when they reach the limit of their expertise. And each of the offices, you know, we participate in a lot of insurances that other, frankly, very few other offices participate in, and therefore, we have a very large draw. The types of practices that we have, orthodontics, typically, you need about 35,000 people to support an orthodontic practice, same with pediatric dental and oral surgery. So, right now, patients, if I weren't here in town, patients would be driving to Fargo if they wanted to get similar care, or St. Cloud. Oral surgery, people would be driving to Fargo or St. Cloud. Pediatric dentistry, the nearest pediatric dentist, Fargo, Brainerd, St. Cloud. So, to have this group of three specialists all under one roof, right there, where it's very visible, this is going to be a nice-looking building, okay? This is gonna, people are going to come to town, and when they're scoping out town, they drive down that road, they're going to say, oh, look, they have an orthodontist, a pediatric dentist, an oral surgeon, and they're gonna, that's going to be a feather in the cap of our community. Not to mention that the building that sits there right now will look a lot different. That's going to really add to it. The funds that we're talking about, again, it's not a grant. Basically, this is offsetting funds to help us cover some costs on the cost of, you know, the sewer, the water, and also expanded parking, because we do have to increase the parking lot significantly. So, when you add those costs up, that's basically the funds that we're talking about. And then presently, we do see quite a few patients, and they drive a long way. So, on a typical day, probably half my patients are from Fergus Falls. Carl Stad, Morris Benson, I had four or five from Alexandria today, Wapatin, lots from, you know, Wadena, Moorhead. So, we bring a lot of people into town, and that's just my practice. The other guys do the same also. So, that's a lot of new people coming to town, and they're going to fill up gas, stop and go shopping, and spend a few dollars here. So, thanks for considering it. We're really happy to be part of this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Swolsted. Anyone else like to speak to this before we close the public hearing? Bring it back to the council. We'll close the public hearing, and it is back to the council. We'll be looking for a resolution to approve the use of tax abatement for the redevelopment of the Heedall's building vacant, current vacant by Dental Specialties of Fergus Falls?
I'll make that.
Dental specialist, yeah, sorry. Brett, thank you.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Justin, thank you. Questions or comments? I do have a question. Doug, are you still on the line?
Yeah, great, good. Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Or maybe Bill can answer. So, if I understand this, it's currently, it's like $11,000 a year for nine and a half years, gets us to the 110,000 that the city would be abating. But I think it was referenced that the estimated tax capacity or the taxes would generate would be 43,000 or 44,000 when the project is completed. So, do we capture that, and we capture that additional tax during the course of the abatement, correct?
Yep. So, what's going to happen is, so, the school's not participating in this, so, the city will capture our portion, so, they'll pay their taxes like normal. So, they'll write the check to Otter Tail County, then the county will send us their taxes back to the city, and then we will abate that back to them. So, they pay their taxes first, and then we capture just the city portion, and we'll send that back. County will do the same. The school will get that increased revenue from day one of the new construction and the new value.
So, the $11,000 that we're abating is based on the city's portion of the new.
The city's portion, yes.
The city's portion, of the new value, not the current value.
The new incremental value.
That makes sense. That makes sense, okay. Thanks.
Did I say that right, Doug?
Well, with statement, it is a hundred percent.
Oh, thank you.
That's one discrepancy with the difference between TIP and abatement, is that abatement, it's all the, the city's, for the property taxes.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
That clarifies the question I had in my mind.
Great.
Any other questions for anyone? Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
Kemfer.
Yes.
Fong.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Yes.
Yes.
That's it for Doug.
That resolution is approved, and we thank you for your investment in our community.
Bye, Doug. Thank you, Doug. I'm going to hang up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. All right, we have one final public hearing this evening, and this is for housing rebate tax abatement for 1765 Shoreview Drive and 538 Anne Street. And we will call on Clara Beck.
Hey, it's me asking for tax abatement. These are for the housing program. We've got two houses up in front of us tonight. One of them is kind of far off in the works, the Anne Street one, they do not yet have a building permit pulled, they're not planning on building this year yet, but they will likely start in the spring. And at that point, they will pursue all of the normal permitting, all of that, and so they've been in touch with Jason Schutzeley, and it's on the radar. The other one is a home that is owned by the owners who are going to be building it. Heck and Bowman are their last names, and they are out on Shoreview Drive, and they are hoping to start building soon, and they have also been in contact with our building department, so proper permitting is underway. So, this is the tax rebate program that we've been working with for the past, you know, year and a half, almost two years now. So, if you have any questions about it, let me know, but otherwise, it is the same request as always. They will get up to $5,000 over five years, whichever comes first, of their property taxes from the city of Fergus Falls rebated to them.
Thank you, Clara. And with that, I will open the public hearing for the housing rebate tax abatement for 1765 Shoreview Drive and 538 Anne Street. Anyone wishing to speak to this topic, please come to the lectern, identify yourself and your address. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and it's back to the council. We will need two resolutions. The first would be a resolution for the tax abatement at 1765 Shoreview, as requested by Kevin Heck and Angela Bowman.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Caroline.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
Kemfer.
Yes.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Rupfer.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. The second, we will be looking for a resolution for the tax abatement for 538 Anne Street, as requested by NCS Homes. Anyone like to offer that? Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
Kemfer.
Yes.
Fong.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There are no bids to award this evening, and there are no petitions or communications. There are seven items on the consent agenda. Anyone would like to consider any of those items individually, we will remove them. Hearing none, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda as presented.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista. Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
Kemfer.
Yes.
Fong.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, three items this evening. The first is a first reading of ordinance 1908 series, which relates to the vacation of campus addition and Outlot B. It's been to committee. We just need this evening someone to introduce that first reading of that ordinance.
I'll introduce that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Item number two is a second reading of ordinance 1508 series, which amends the City Code, Chapter 154, relating to yard regulations and accessory buildings. This has been to the committee, to the council. If anyone has any questions. Karen, yes, please, our city planner. Good evening.
Good evening, Your Honor, and thank you, city council. I just wanted to briefly go over the staff memo that accompanied this. As the mayor stated, this was what we discussed at last Wednesday's committee of the whole. So, there are two options in front of you for consideration this evening. Both of them are identical in the fact that they remove the two-foot setback requirement from the property line, as well as changing the 50% opacity to maximum, as pointed out by council member Kwame. Option B is different in that it does go back to language that the Planning Commission previously used before the two-foot setback requirement, that just stated that a boundary line fence would need to be wholly on the property of the individual or company constructing it. And then, if the, both property owners agreed, it could go on the boundary line. So, the main difference is just in one, it says nothing about where a fence could go in that section. The second option, it does have some of that language. So, those are two options for you to discuss. The other option would be to send it back to the Planning Commission as well for any further discussion or changes. So, if there's any questions, I'm happy to take those.
Thanks, Karen. Any thoughts on the two options?
Just, I think I could go either way, but I think it would make sense under option B where it has to be all entirely on your property, or if it's going to actually go on the boundary line, that there has to be a verbal agreement between neighbors. I think that makes the most sense and can address some of the concerns about a fence that's on, say, the boundary, but it's not all the way done. Future expansion on that fence, I think would make sense to require both, but I kind of like that. Gets us a little bit more flexibility, but defines where it can go versus just being more vague.
And is that consistent with conversations at the Planning Commission? If someone liked to offer a resolution? Go ahead, Brett.
Which one are we voting on?
Well.
We don't have a motion.
Which one?
We don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary. I don't think it's necessary. I think you just are having a second reading on option B or option A, so whichever it is that you want.
Second, yeah, that's, okay. So, whatever it is, the consensus is that we're going to have a second reading on. Is anyone opposed to having a second read on option B?
Having a what?
Look, two. Roll call, vote, option B.
Anybody opposed?
I'm opposed to B. I'm with A. Because, like I said, I mean, you, even if you don't have a problem with it, I mean, there's a lot of areas. What you're going to do is leave a four-foot gap between two people who've got fences, and then we've got enough people cutting through properties it is, and they're just going to see this as a big avenue. I mean, we got people in my area cruising the alleys in the middle of the night, whatever reason they are, and to have them start cutting through properties, and as far as I'm concerned, if you get two of them like this, it just looks bad. And so, I personally am opposed to B, and I will only go with A.
May I offer a clarification?
Yeah.
Option B does not require a two-foot setback. It's, the two-foot setback is removed in both option A and option B.
Okay. As long as it's removed, yeah.
Yeah. So, thank you for that clarification. That's where I understood as well.
Option B, as I understand it, requires if it's going to go on the property line, both parties, neighbors, have to be in agreement. If it's going to, if you don't get that, then that fence has to solely be 100% on your property, not on the boundary.
I can live with that.
Yep, good. Any other questions? It's, we're going to be voting on the second reading of option B. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
Kemfer.
Yes.
Fong.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Yes.
That resolution, that ordinance is approved. Sorry, thank you, Karen, for your work on that. Thanks to the Planning Commission. I know you guys spent a lot of time on that, so, thank you for that. Item number three is a second reading of ordinance 1808 series, amending the zoning map for Shoreview Drive. This, again, has been to committee, been discussed. If there's any questions, we will direct them to our city attorney or our city planner. If there's any questions, we will direct them to our city attorney or our city planner. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
Kemper.
Yes.
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 That ordinance is approved. Under presentation of claims tonight, we have claims in the amount of $1,580,352. And if there's any questions there, we will direct them to our Finance Director, Bill Sonmore. Hearing none.
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Roll call, please.
Fish.
Yes.
Kemper.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports. There are no reports from staff administrative officers, and there is no old or unfinished business, and there is no new business that I'm aware of. So unless there's anything else to come before the council, this portion will be adjourning to a closed session to deal with threatened litigation per Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.05, subsection 3B. So, and we will not be reconvening. So with that, this portion of the meeting is adjourned.